My name is Bruce Zingman. I’m the president of the Sebastian Property Owners Association. This is our annual Candidates Forum. It is our ninth one. I will introduce to you the esteemed Wesley Davis.
Not yet, not yet. Okay.
The format will be two minutes each for an intro. And then for each question, you’ll have two minutes. And we’ll go, we’ll keep going around rotating. And then two minutes for closing. We’ll also have 15 seconds, and then a stop. Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Well, first of all, it’s a pleasure to be here. And of course, I always do what Sal says, so that’s why I said right back down there. Not yet. Before we get started here tonight, of course, this is the Candidates Forum for the October 13th, 2011. This is the day of the Candidates Forum, but we’ve got the elections coming up in November 8th. Is that correct? That is correct. Of course, you have that due. First of all, whichever one of y’all stood up said, “I don’t know.” I wanted everybody to see that. But more importantly, I want everybody to understand that truly in front of them are the County Commission, or excuse me, City Council for Sebastian coming up. You’ve got the candidates in front, and your seats that are vacated, or ACs vacated by Eugene Wolf. And I’d like to thank him publicly for his service today. He has decided not to rerun for reelection, so therefore, there will be a new, for sure, City Council member. And unfortunately, we have the incumbents. So with that, we’ll go ahead and get started. And I have some questions here, but before we get started with that, what I’m gonna do is, it’s okay, I’m gonna start in alphabetical order over here, and go to give you two minutes for introductions. And so we’re gonna start with Councilman McCoy.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Davis. And thank you, SPOA, for having this forum once again. It’s a wonderful opportunity for all of us to be here and share our thoughts. As most of you in this room know, but some members of the public probably don’t, I’ve been in Sebastian for 14 years. I have a master’s degree from Penn State in education. I am a retired United States Army Master Sergeant, and proud of it. I’ve served on council for six years now. This is my fourth time running. So if I ever get binger acted, I know I’m gonna be certified for an extra week just because I’m choosing to do this over and over and over again. A lot of people ask me, “Why do you do it? Why are you interested?” Well, the longer I stay in, the more difference I’ve been able to make for the city of Sebastian. And I enjoy what I do. This time last year, when other people were sitting up in this forum, some members of this audience were asking me, “If you’re, are you gonna run next year?” And I’m like, “Give me a break. Come on, we’re not even close yet.” But my promise to them was, if I’m healthy, yes, and if I still love what I do. So, am I healthy? Yes. Do I still love what I do? Absolutely. And I believe I can make a difference and continue to make a difference for the city of Sebastian. You’ll hear more about my platform. I’m sure Wesley has some great questions for us tonight. And I think, oh, look at that list we have. And I encourage everyone afterwards to come up. I’ll be available outside to discuss individually any questions you have. Also, feel free, at any time, to call my home, 388-0961. It’s listed in the phone book. I do return phone calls. And look at that, signs waving right in my face all right there. So, it went too fast. With that, I will conclude my introduction and look forward to the questions.
Thank you. Mr. David Tivio.
My name is David Tivio. I’ve run in the past for Sebastian City Council. I’m a local residential contractor here in the city of Sebastian. Been here since 2001. I came down here for a better way of life. I was tired of the rat race up in the Northeast. I came for nice and peaceful, relaxing way of life, which I found in Sebastian. It’s a beautiful community, beautiful riverfront. I’ve decided to run the last few years because I think some of the spending can be getting out of hand in the city. I think that it’s time for new blood on the council. There’s an open seat. I really feel there’s been a lot of overspending in the city. I think we really need to be, in tough times, physically responsible. We’ve been furloughing our city employees, which I think is a shame. They haven’t had a cost of living raise in three years. These people are hurt too, just like everybody else. And I think it’s really time to tighten up the belt straps here and try to stop our spending unnecessarily in the city. And hopefully, we can keep our services up by keeping our city workers employed and happy. And that’s all I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Mr. Gillyam, two minutes, please.
Thank you, Wesley Davis, for coming out and helping out this evening. I want to thank SPOA for having us. And I also want to thank the candidates that are up here tonight, because this is not an easy task, to give to your community in a special way, to see that things go the proper way. So I want to thank everybody up here. My name’s Damian Gillyam. I’m sure a lot of people know. I’ve been in the community over 25 years. I have multiple businesses. What brought us to Sebastian is the quality of life. I’m originally from Manhattan, one of 11. And my wife Bonnie married to have 25 years. I have three beautiful kids, Damian Jr., which is at UF doing electrical engineering. And I’m so proud of him. Academics are very important in my family. And I have my daughter Casey, who’s also Ivy number three. Eugene Wolf’s son keeps beating us. He’s number two. The reason that I’m reading is, I care about this community. My website is DamianLovesSebastian.com. My platform is there. So I don’t want to go into a lot of details. I want to try to cover a lot of territory tonight. I’ve been disenchanted with some of the things that have been taking place here at City Council. I’m hoping to make a difference. Number one, I want to see transparency. The checkbook should go on the internet. It’s no money. I think that’s very important, how discretion and respect gets earned. The Citizens Academy can help this community with volunteers learning about their government here in this building. It saves the police department a quarter million dollars a year. We can do it here. So I intend to give my salary, until we get the employees off of furlough, I’m gonna donate the salary that I receive here to get that Citizens Academy started. Economic development and real estate values are gonna be very important to me to get your tax assessments going in the right direction. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gillyam. Next, Mr. Bob McFarlane. Bob, two minutes.
Yes, good evening. Thank you, Wesley. Thank you, SPOA, for having us here. For those who don’t know, my name’s Bob McFarlane. And I come here via Brooklyn, trying to escape the winter and came down Florida. But of course, I started out, my parents establishing me a commitment to service, which I have followed basically my whole life. I joined the military at a very young age, and I was in the explosive ordinance disposal and rose to the rank of sergeant. When I got out of the Army, I went to college. And I graduated from University of Albany with a degree in political science and English. When I came down to Florida here 11 years ago, a nice Irish kid living on Melvast Terrace, I started with the Department of Children and Families, starting out as a child abuse investigator, rising through the ranks to supervisor, and now I run the child abuse investigations for the Treasure Coast and open Chobe Counties. I have over 40 investigators that work under me, a very talented group of people. I deal in chaos almost on a daily basis, trying to make families better, solve situations for disadvantaged and abused children that are in our community. There’s a lot of issues that I see that I think my experience with the Department of Children and Families, I can bring to the council. I work well with others. I helped to establish a lot of community groups within. I work with Children’s Home Society, the United Way, the Family Preservation Services, the local domestic violence shelters, because we have a lot of families that go there. I have five children. I have brand-new twins that are 13 months old. I plan, I love Sebastian. I want Sebastian to be the same type that they can live here, retired, because I’m gonna retire and die here, not in the near future, but for a long time. And I want to keep Sebastian, the quality of life that we have here, the beautiful riverfront. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Ms. Amber Miller, two minutes.
Thank you very much. Thanks for, SPOA, for having this forum this evening. This is a really great opportunity to get the word out for those of you who can’t make it in person, but to be watched on television too. So thank you, all the people on TV line. My name is Amber Miller. I grew up in the Dallas-Fort Worth area and moved out here in 2003, just after I got my bachelor’s degree from the University of Texas at Arlington. I first started out teaching school, especially in a middle school. I taught science and PE for three years, and I think I probably had some students of yours. After that, I decided that it was time to go back to school. I went back and got my master’s in physical therapy, and I’m now a part-time physical therapist at Select PT here in Sebastian. So I probably will possibly treat some of you or your children in the future as well. I’m looking to be someone of a new voice for Sebastian. I have a small son, well, he’s not so small now, every day gets bigger, one-year-old. And I also want to provide a place where he can stay, or retire, or do whatever he wants, but stay in this area. I love Sebastian so much. And I’m hoping that by being, not so much politician, but a professional and someone with a little bit of business background, I can provide a fresh outlook and a new perspective for citizens of Sebastian.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Councilman Don Wright.
Okay, thank you, Wesley. Don Wright, currently a member of the City Council in Sebastian. For those of you who don’t know me, I’ve been married to my wife, who’s my biggest supporter, for 43 years. We came to Sebastian in 2000 as full-time residents. We had visited here many years prior to that. And decided, when we looked around Florida, and we made a conscious effort to drive the entire west coast and east coast of Florida, that this was the nicest community that we could find. And one of the reasons I got on the City Council was to try to maintain that. And before I became an elected official, I was a volunteer for over five years, working with the Inter River Counter, County Chamber of Commerce, the County Economic Development Committee, Chairman of Parks and Recreation in Sebastian, Chairman of Sebastian Business Committee. And in the process of that, a lot of projects were initiated. And being on council, we’ve been able to get started on some of them. After five years of work, in April of this year, we finally got an economic development element incorporated into our agenda and our comprehensive plan. That’s just the beginning, however, of what we need to do to move the city forward with responsible economic growth, which is a key element. The economic quality of life of all our residents seems to be suffering. And it’s very important to me to pursue the opportunity to fix that problem. And I think working in that area for almost seven years now gives me an opportunity to make a contribution to all of our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Okay, that completes the opening introductions. And what we’ll do now, Ms. Quay, since you started first, we’ll start with the questions on Mr. D. Vergilio. And that’s a whole lot easier than it was the first time I ran, so I’m getting a better feeling. And what we’ll do is, we’ll start with some of the charter questions. We’ll go all the way through. You do have two minutes to answer, and so, Councilman McCoy, you’ll be the last to answer this question.
Oh, really?
I try to be as judicious and fair as possible. Okay. We’re gonna start off with the, some of the charter questions, that are the charter amendments. And the first one is, is whether or not you are in favor of or opposed to four-year versus two-year terms, which is the first question. David?
I’m opposed to the four-year term. The main reason is, if you get someone in there that is disruptive, is hard to deal with, is somebody that the public thought would be a good figure to be in there, and you’re not, you are stuck with them for four years. Another reason is, you know, four years is long-term. If the people like you, they’re gonna vote you in again. It gives you the option after two years, if you feel...
How long is that, number one?
It gives you the opportunity to run again if you feel you want to run again. In Mr. Wolf’s case, he did, he did four years, two-two-year terms. He felt it was enough. He had the obligations. He wanted to attend it. That was great. You can bow out easily, or rerun. It doesn’t matter. But I think it gives the public the opportunity to say, “Yes, we want you,” or “No, we don’t want you,” within the two-year term. Is it gonna cost the city a ton of money? No, it’s not. I think we’re gonna save, I think they said, “We would save $30,000 a year for each election.” I just think that if you get stuck with a bad candidate, you’re stuck for four years, and that can be something very bad and disruptive. Especially if you get stuck with two bad candidates that just don’t get along with each other. We’re gonna be looking like the Senate and House Representatives. Nothing will get come up here, we’ll just be arguing back and forth. It’s crazy. So, no, I oppose the three years. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Mr. Gillyam? And please feel free to ask or repeat the question if you’re unconcerned. We want good answers, so do not feel intimidated about asking me to repeat the question.
Thank you, Wesley. I oppose the four years also. I think that if you’re gonna do a good job, the Board should have a right after two years to say, “Job well done. Would like to see you back up there.” I echo a lot of these sentiments that David had just indicated. I don’t think that, I know that some of the other board members who voted, who are up here, I get Andrea, voted to put that on four years, because I guess once you get up here, you kind of, you get comfortable. You know, it’s nice to get a check every month. But it gives a chance to have the public measure of performance. And four years, that’s quite a long time. So I think that two years is sufficient. I think that the, what they’re trying to do is establish power up here, and that’s what I’m against. I think you should have diversity. There’s been block voting going on here in the community, where they get certain people up here, and they stay up here, and nothing seems to get done. And if it does get done, it gets done the wrong way. So, I’ve seen them spend money. I’ve been coming to the meetings for over 10 years now. And if they think they saved the money by going four years, or, you know, in reference to paying for the election, the money I’ve seen councilmembers spend in two will shock you. So, that’s another main reason that I would be totally against it. Two years is sufficient. Thank you, Wesley.
Thank you, Mr. Gillyam. Ms. McFarlane?
Yes, thank you. I was on the Sebastian Charter Review Committee, and I can tell you that this was probably the highest debate issue that came before the committee. And for some of the same factors that Damian and David brought forth, those were some of the concerns that were brought forth. One of the things was that it was looking at being cost-effective, because the city having an election in the off-year cost the city $35,000. Another thing we looked at is, the two-year terms was, if somebody gets on in two years, there could be a learning curve for somebody who gets on, not all candidates, but for some. And that could be anywhere from six to eight months, to learn about all the different departments and everything. So, they gain the experience, and then in a short period of time, they’re up for an election again. So if they went to the four-year terms, you would have maybe a more experienced council. And then as far as, we made the decision, and we brought it before the council, and this is on the referendum, and it’s going out to the voters of Sebastian. And what we need to remember here in America is, your vote is very important, and is a cherished right. And you should be an informed voter. And as you should look on the referendum and learn about all the issues that are on there and vote for, as well as all the candidates that are on the ballot, to look them up, review their history, see where they’ve been. You know Paula, I mean, my number’s out there. If anybody has any questions, feel free to give me a call. But it’s going out to the voters to decide whether two or four years, and I think it’s important for the citizens to vote.
Thank you, Bob.
So is it two or four? Is it for two or four years?
Is it for, to increase the problem to two, two-four?
Yeah. Are you for two or for four?
We’ll get that, we’ll have that in closing. Ms. Miller?
Will you read your question?
Absolutely. And it’s basically whether or not you’re in favor of the charter amendment that increases the City Council terms from a two-year term to a four-year term.
Economically, yes, the four-year term makes sense, because you’re gonna be saving all this money. However, it could be an entirely new City Council every four years, or maybe not. And if that’s the case, then you’re gonna have that same learning curve that you’re gonna have with a two-year term. And even though the two-year term learning curve is difficult, the great thing about that is, there’s already people on council who can be mentors. And even if you’re a political newcomer, like I’ve been called, if you’ve never been on City Council, you’re still gonna have a lot to learn. And if you have people that are already on council that can help out with that, it’s gonna be a lot easier than, say, a whole new slate of five or six council members every four years. So I think when it, you know, I really weigh the pros and cons, the two-year really does make sense, just for the fact that you’ve got that support from those who are already on council, and they’re not your opponents, and you’re not, you know, working against one of them. I remember last year, or those last year, or year-to-year, I guess you could call it, so two years.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Mr. Wright?
Yeah. This was a recommendation from our Charter Review Committee. And I think it’s really important, when we have our citizens get involved, that the City Council look at these recommendations, and they make very careful. As council, we voted to put it on the ballot. Personally, I’m quite happy with the two-year term, and the plan to vote for the two-year term being continued. If it was changed, however, it would establish staggered terms. And they’ve done that by the first time, it would be three years, and then the next election, it would be four, so that there would be the same alternate turnover in seats on council. So you should, you should be aware of that. It wouldn’t end up with all five council members being reelected at the same time. You would still have two in one election, and two in three in the next. And it would follow pretty much the way the county commission elections work. A big problem that we have in Sebastian, and for other municipal counties, they have these off-term elections, where there’s really, the main thing going on right now is the City Council election, is that we have a low turnout of voters. And that’s unfortunate, but in turn, typically, we would have 7,000 or 8,000 voters every, on the main elections, and we may have 2,000 or 2,500 voters for this election. That can have a dramatic effect on the results. So I felt that this deserved the vote of the public, and then the committee that recommended it deserved consideration, and moved to put it on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Wright. Councilman McCoy?
Gosh. Two years ago, Don Wright sat at that, and then I sat at this, and I had to follow him every question. Two years from now, if the two of us are up here again, could I sit at that and he sit at that? Because I wind up saying a lot of the same things. We have a lot of things in common. I’m not complaining. I’m true. You’re not gonna get me to say which one I am for or against. I too believe it’s your decision, and this was brought to us at council, there are pros and cons to the decision. And I fully respect your decision, whatever it be. You’ve heard a lot of the cons up here, and they’re all true. Some of the pros that I didn’t hear mentioned, well, actually, they’ve all been mentioned too. The 36,000-year savings does add up over time. Is it significant? I’ll let you be the judge. Off-year elections, as Don Wright just said, the problem is you’re voting for three people right now, three out of five, and we get the low, low voter turnout. If it was on the other cycle, when we go up and vote for the Wesley Davises of the world and the Joe Fletchers of the world, more people in the presidents and senators, more people show up, and you get a better representation of the city. The one thing that wasn’t mentioned is, I don’t know about you, but I hate signs, and it would be two less years of signs, but that’s no biggie. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman McCoy. All right. Now we have the next question in this, this will begin with Mr. Gillyam. Mr. Gillyam, we have a charter question, but far as removal of charter officers. And from what I gather, it boils down to the simple fact of, they can, should the residents of Sebastian invoke a charter amendment that says that the City Council, with a majority of vote, by the City Council, remove a council member without...
Charter member.
Charter. Yes, substitute.
Try to hold me open.
Yes, thank you. Without the presentation of written charges, suspension, notice to the charter, hearing, and delay provided on the current charter. Yes. So, and then, you’re, and just to elaborate a little bit on the charter officers, you have the city manager, you have the city clerk. And should those individuals be allowed to be removed without any of the following? I’ll read it one more time so everybody’s clear. And just a majority vote without representation of written charges, suspension, notice to the charter officer, hearing, and delay provided for in the current charter.
Thank you very much, Wesley.
Thank you.
First of all, charter officers run the city, and they can report to the City Council. I think that any charter officer, when it involves dismissal, should have a due process, at least a hearing, and that it should be done with the majority of the vote of the council. But I wanted to elaborate, since I answered your question, I wanted to elaborate on the previous question real quickly. But I mentioned something about learning curve with the two-year versus the four-years. You know, I took time, I love this community. I learn on the job. I come to every meeting, I read the agenda, I get a copy of the packet sent to me every Friday, I do my due diligence, and I show up here Wednesday. So, you know, to give the excuse of saying, you know, four years, you can learn on the job, I don’t find that credible. The other thing is, they didn’t disclose that Robert, Bob, and Bob was appointed, and Gene from SPOA was appointed by Jim Hill, the mayor, to be on the charter. So I thought that was important as well.
If we could, if you can, just, could...
I just want to use every minute of my time, sir.
And I would like to do that in closing. We do have too many closings, and we’ll give you that opportunity.
Okay.
And so I just want to answer the questions, and then we’ll go through them everybody. Because if we go to nine o’clock...
That’s fine. But if we’re basically due process at the point, we’re leaving a charter officer. All right. Thank you.
Ms. McFarlane?
Yes, thank you. I didn’t know if I was gonna be forward sometime. I mean, I feel like it was almost intact here. Is, yes, I was appointed by the mayor, and five council members, each appointed two members to the committee, and then there were other committees that could be added on.
And I appreciate what you’re saying, and perhaps I’ll let Mr. Gillyam give a little out of control with that. But if we could, just answer the questions, and then we’ll give the closing. And you have two minutes for the closing. We’ll give a rebuttal.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
And as far as the charter officers, that was, again, it was on the Review Committee, and that was another, when that came before us. And the charter officers, they work at the will of the City Council, okay? That means if the charter officers, two were part of the thing, and they were all agreeing, if they don’t have the support of the council, they cannot be effective in performing the city’s functions. And if it is the majority of the council to let them go, then yes, it could be let go. And I supported that. You know, because I’m also an at-will employee for the state of Florida. If the governor doesn’t feel that I am effective, I can be let go without anything. One thing that the charter officers do have is they have contracts with the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McFarlane. Ms. Miller?
Do you want to just...
Yes.
...reiterate a question, maybe?
Yes. And it’s, shall the charter amendment provide that a charter officer may be removed from office with or without cause by a majority vote of the entire City Council, without the representation of written charges, suspension, notice to the charter officer, hearing, and delay provided for currently in the charter? Is that clear? That’s your language, so I’m doing the best I can with what you had. Did I tell you I was opposed to charter governance of any?
Well, I think that if the voters feel that they want to give us that responsibility to be able to get rid of any of these charter officers for whatever reason, then I would be for it. But then I know a lot of people that would say one thing, and then turn around and say, “Well, why did you get rid of them? All you voted to let us get rid of them for no apparent reason.” I also work in a field where you can be let go if you’re not effective, and I think that, or I would hope that, before someone getting fired or let go, other measures would be taken to prove their efficiency, and then that wouldn’t have to come to pass. But I couldn’t say if I’d be for it or against it right now, I’d just have to let the voters... I'd just have to let the voters decide if that would be a responsibility they wanna give us as city council members.
Thank you. Councilman Wright?
Yeah, this is a really historic in that the current language has created a lot of problems for different cities. If the majority of the city council wants to remove a charter officer, that charter officer is gonna end up getting removed. They do have protection, their contracts, and that really is what, what that individual has to rely on. And I think it's, it's a, a great responsibility, but we've seen issues in Bureau Beach. We've seen issues in other areas around where this process that is gone through can create legal liability for the community. It can create a number of problems. So what happens practically is the people are removed without cause, which typically in the contract means that they get their severance pay. You don't have to bring charges, you don't have to go through a trial. And this word simplifies the process. It does not take really any rights away from the individuals. And as a matter of fact, uh, the city council has this responsibility right now. And this is an effort to clean up the language so that it, it does not create situations where the city or the individual would be embarrassed, would have to go through a lengthy process of termination. And nothing in terms of work for the city would be get, would get done during that term. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Coit?
Oh, good, I have something a little different to say. We went through this once in the city of Sebastian, not that long ago. And I think those of you who, who know me and know anything about me and have watched me and my dealings on council, the one thing you probably know is I'm all about being fair to all sides of a question. And I would tell you that the night I sat up here and we relieved a council charter officer, it was a very horrible feeling. And, and it was horrible for me to watch that process. Whether it was fair or not never got to be debated because all it takes is three. I believe that y'all will make a good decision on this. I know there is some legal challenge to the way our charter's written. However, it was the most horrible thing to watch and live through. And imagine our officers, charter officers, who may be under the gun. And they do, they work for us, there's no doubt about it. But would you like coming to work a couple of nights a month and wondering if you're gonna go home with a job or not? I'd rather discuss it, if there's cause, goodbye, if there's not, then you stay. I, it was tough. But again, you're gonna decide that question. My personal experience with that, it was horrible. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Wright. Mr. McGee, continue.
I think it works both ways. If you think the person's doing a bad job and you can't get two other council members somehow to agree with your position and you remove them, everybody thinks you're a hero. But if you get two other council members together to remove somebody that's doing a good job because you have a personal conflict with them, I think that's wrong. And it can happen. Uh, you know, if one of us gets in an argument with Mr. Minner and we just don't see eye to eye with him and I start convincing two other members to just get rid of him for no apparent reason, it's not right. So I think a due process, in some fashion, there should be some sort of wrongdoing on their part or, or ineffectiveness on their part. I don't think you can just wildcat throw them out of here for no apparent reason. And that's the way the current system's set up. I mean, if things ineffective, yeah, I think it would work, but I think it works in the other way. You know, and that's what I think politics isn't about. Getting the people you want in positions and taking people out of positions that don't see eye to eye with you even though they're doing an effective job. So I think that due process would be more effective than to just throw someone out of office. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna go on to some of this, uh, questions that I have here that were handed to me. And so we'll start off with, uh, Ms. Parlin will be first this time. Mr. Gillings, you'll be last in this instance. And the first one is, since the city revenues have been decreasing and services are being cut, at what point in time would you determine a tax increase is warranted?
Raising taxes. I'm not in favor of raising taxes at all in any way, shape, or form. I've been doing more with less in state government for as long as I can remember. I mean, we're at the point right now, it seems sometimes we're doing everything with nothing. I think the budget is probably the most important thing that Sebastian faces over the next year, over the next few years, making sure that we're not wasting any money. You know, we gotta look for savings everywhere we can. We have to decide with the projects that are out there in the city, what are wants and what are needs. I mean, we have to keep our quality of life because if we let services deteriorate in the community, the property value is gonna go further down. Nobody wants to see that at all. As far as more ways of saving money, I mean, I think maybe we could have a productivity award out there. And it could be for employees, it could be for citizens of Sebastian. If they see a way that the city can save money in any way, shape, or form, and it is efficient, that they get a prize. It could be as little as ten bucks, it could be a hundred and fifty dollars, depending on how much money they save. But I mean, the budget is one, is a grave issue that we need. I mean, we do have our rainy day fund that is out there, which we could tap into. The problem is, once you break the piggy bank, you can never put the money back in there. So once you open it up, everybody uses it. So, I mean, Mr. Minner does an excellent job, I think, with watching the budget. I think he's, uh, very talented with the people that he has. And the budget is a major issue. I've been doing more with less, like I said, and I've been balancing the budget for the last four and a half years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McParland. Ms. Miller?
I too don't like the word taxes. And I would feel that the only reason to raise taxes or even consider it would be after all other avenues have been traveled down. Grants or, um, you know, more volunteer work here or, you know, less spending there. But only after the budget has really been scrutinized and looked at. I know that they do, like you said, a very good job of balancing the budget every year and making sure that, you know, we're cutting where we can and keeping what we need to aside. But then and only then after we've really looked at what's available, um, in the way, like I said, grants. That's, that's a big thing. There's a huge, you know, you can do an internet search for grants. And, you know, the bad thing about that is you've got all these stipulations a lot of times on grants and being able to follow all of those, all of those is difficult. So only after all of that, you know, would I ever even entertain the thought of raising taxes.
So, thank you, Ms. Miller. Councilman Wright?
Yeah, the, uh, this is a, probably one of the most difficult and important decisions that we face. There's a, there's a point at which the services that the city provides to the community have to be maintained. And if we get to a point that critical services cannot be maintained without a tax increase or military increase, then we would have to seriously look at that and, and probably pass a military increase. We are very fortunate. We have not increased the military rate in the last three years despite the fact that our property values are down. And taxes, um, that you pay, as said, to Sebastian, have been reduced. We've also got a budget that this year calls for no increase in military. And we project it out for one more year, no increase in military. And that has some assumptions in it. And that's assuming that the state continues to provide us with adequate funds that equal what we've been getting in the past. I'm very much against tax increases. I'd like to see the military stay where it is. But I think that we have to be realistic. The, the city government's responsibility to the citizens is to provide services. One of those critical services of the police department. And if we let those services get to a level below the critical mass that we need, we're all gonna be in trouble. So that would be the trigger that I would look at for considering a tax increase. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Coit?
Okay, we all agree, we don't wanna raise taxes. But there does come a time when doing more with less can't happen. And that's when we all have to make a decision. Do we increase the military rate or do we decrease our expected levels of service? As council member Wright just said, there are certain things, like the police department, there is no going below the line. There's a standard that we expect. Am I for raising taxes? No. But we're gonna need your help this year when it comes budget time. We need to hear your opinion. We'll give you the choices, and, but we need to hear from you. Some of the other options that are out there that have been bandied about and discussed are combining services, like making our building department combine it with the county or even combining the police department with the sheriff's department. No offense, Wesley, I love you to death, Joe. But look, I want our departments to stay here. They're having a hard time at the county level to, to maintain services. And it's not a secret that in the North County, in Sebastian, and in Felsmere, we kinda get forgotten a lot. And though we have two great county commissioners who fight for us, they're not a majority vote, they're only two, and they fight very hard for us. So I don't ever wanna see us lose control of our services. Uh, we're gonna need you to come to the meetings where the budget, we have a great budget committee, volunteer to be on that. We have meeting after meeting after meeting. Uh, people, the public can come to the budget hearings. We need to hear from you this coming year in August, July or August. I got a stop sign. I got a stop. Oh, come and give us your opinion.
Thank you, Councilman Coit. Mr. McGee, continue.
I'll be easy to sit up here and say, yeah, as soon as I get in office, I'm gonna raise taxes. Nobody's ever gonna say that. How would you ever get elected? The problem is, we don't wanna get into the, the same situation like Port St. Lucie's where we have to lay off half our, uh, police force. Nobody wants services cut. Everybody wants their services kept at the level they're at. The problem is, most of your taxes probably went down this year, if you look at it. Your cess rate went down, our military's been staying the same. Your amount of payments actually less, maybe by a hundred, maybe by fifty dollars. But with the assessed values going down on property, it's very difficult to keep our services up. We're gonna have to really look into keeping our budget intact. Another thing we need to do is really become very business friendly. Everybody keeps talking about how they wanna bring businesses into our city. You don't see it coming in here. They get cycled in our debt management department, they get cycled in the building department. We have to make those businesses come into our city, wanna be here, stream line getting into here. When you have business in the city, it brings a more even tax base rather than the veteran community that we are. Businesses help bring in more tax money out of residential development thus. So if we can attract more businesses, like we've been hearing for the last five years that everybody's gonna do, and we still can't do it, you know, we gotta track airport business, we gotta track regular, small businesses. That's what our community's based on, the small business people, like myself, I'm a small business owner. Mr. Gillings is a small business owner. We'd love to thrive in this community, we can expand because it's so difficult to do business. So I think until we expand all our options, you know, nobody's gonna want to raise taxes. And, um, you know, and unless it's inevitable, it's a really tough decision. So, thank you. Thank you, Dan.
Mr. McGee?
I, uh, been to many budget meetings, budget hearings over the years. And this last budget hearing, Mr. Minner put out a report about stabilization of property values. He said they continue to keep the same military rate would not be realistically possible. Then I looked at his report and it says city goals, government efficiency, commitment to future, quality of life, environmental conservation, county-wide infrastructure improvements. But nothing on there says revenue. What are they doing? They've been up here for two years. What are they doing to create different revenue departments? And there's streams of revenues. It doesn't take a rocket scientist to either look to the cities. You've got sixty-seven counties in the state of Florida, there's thousands of cities. You look for cities, you go on the internet, and you see what they're bringing. And it, and it's, it's just, it's right out there in front of you. For instance, I've been trying to get these guys to do recycling for three, four, or five years. It's a city, third world countries have recycling. They have companies that'll come to your property, weigh your recyclables, and give you credit where you can spend the money somewhere else in the community. So now you're helping the environment out. That could be a revenue stream. When I'm bringing in natural gas, which is gonna be a big thing in the future, you can tax natural gas. You know, we get franchise agreements, thirty, thirty years here, Comcast, FPML, and so on. What they do is they tack on a tax when you get your bill, and that comes to the city. But why aren't they charging these big corporations fees for the right-of-ways? That's additional revenue. Uh, the, a grant department, Port St. Lucie County. Don't take my word for it. Go down there, they had a grant department, they brought in thirty-five million one year, and it cost four hundred thousand to run the grant department. You have to think outside the box. The mentality is, look, they, they tell you, we have no money, but yet they got three million second reserves that they shouldn't have, 'cause they're all for reserves. And right away, they're telling you to set you up for next year. Think outside the box, think like a businessman or woman would do. If your revenue's a issue, you look for other departments to create revenue. And I can spend here all night here with me after the meeting. I've got plenty of ideas how the city can bring revenue in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gillings.
Mr. Parlin, you started with that question, correct? I'm just making sure you pay attention, sorry. Next we have, uh, this will be for Ms. Miller. It is, can you discuss some of the highlights of the city's economic development plan and how would you implement those plans?
Yes, I can. And it's raining, I hope you guys all brought your umbrella.
I'm gonna just write in drops.
Saw everybody looking around and it started raining. Um, it's really funny you asked that question because it was one of the, the reader submitted questions on TC Palm. And I had never really looked into the specifics of the economic development plan other than they wanna try to bring in new businesses, bring, you know, raise as much money as they can, all this kind of stuff. And I got to looking at it and I'm, I'm really excited that the, the main industries that they're trying to develop here in Sebastian include, um, the life sciences. I'm a physical therapist, I have extensive knowledge in health sciences and biology. Another one is artists, entertainment, recreation, research and development. And I have personal experience pretty much since birth in most of these areas. And so I feel that I can bring kind of a, an expertise to that. And some of these things that we've been talking about this evening are, are all laid out in this economic development plan that was brought forth, I believe, was in March of two thousand and nine. And, um, you know, part of that is, you know, we, we have to follow this, but part of it is being creative with the policies and the individual objectives. And I hope that I can help with some of these objectives. Or, you know, one of my kind of platform things was providing assistance to businesses and giving businesses the, you know, kind of a packet of information when they come into the city where they've already been here, so that they know who to contact when they have a question or they know where to go if they need something done. And it's all laid out, and it's a really simple plan to read. I was reading it to just some, some citizens the other day. And it, you know, it doesn't have all the legal jargon that a lot of our, our other budgeting, budgeting things have. And, um, so I hope that, you know, by bringing in my personal experience, I can help with some of those parts of the economic development plan. It's really tough to go first on that question.
Sorry about that. Thanks, Ms. Miller. Mr. Wright?
Yeah, the, um, the city's economic development plan covers target industries that we wanna track, such as aircraft, medical science, research and development, technology. And this was developed in connection with, and you remember county, and it was actually in the county economic development plan, which had been, uh, which was kind of out of date, uh, three or four years ago. And what was done at that time was to take Enterprise Florida, which is probably the biggest growth of jobs generator in Florida, guidelines for what types of industries the state wanted and where they would provide incentives for those corporations to move here. We moved into that and the county now has, which then applies to Sebastian, incentive programs in connection with those desirable industries. And those include, um, payroll, uh, tax breaks and payroll breaks, uh, potential- potential significant financial incentives that have resulted in some companies moving into Indian River County. Sebastian has, to its credit, the privilege of being the first city to pass tax abatement. And we have now developed a pretty good idea of what we want. It took until April of 2011 for us to get the economic development element in the comprehensive plan, which is an important part of being able to implement the actual ideas that we have. And right now, as co-chairman of the North County Business Development Committee, we've taken that and we're working on a plan with the business community and the city to market and advertise our assets to really bring businesses here.
Thank you, Councilman Wright. Councilman Corrigan?
Dino Don. He summarized what's happened very, very well, so let me just hit some of the highlights of the economic development plan. I've had the opportunity for the last four years, or maybe a little more, to be on the county's economic advisory board. And I will tell you that, I will reiterate that the city of Sebastian indeed was the first one, we were the test project to get through the, oh god, I just lost tax, the tax abatements. And we were following and using the outlines that the county had. And there was a little, they were a little skeptical at the county level, like, oh, if this fails, we might fail next year. But bless our peepickin' little hearts up here, we passed it and we got it. And then it made it easier for the county the very next year to pass the tax abatement. So we led the way, we've led the way in other things too, but I'll mention them later. But that's one, that we led the way in. And are people flocking to Indian River County? Are they flocking to Sebastian? Are they flocking to Florida? No. Not very many people are flocking anywhere. So the expectation that we're gonna wake up tomorrow and business is gonna be grand here just because we have a plan is unrealistic. We're doing the best we can, we're trying to be as business friendly. We've outlined what our expectations are to give abatements and incentives for businesses. It's just, businesses aren't going very far. Oh, by the way, the parking downtown that we're expanding is helping our businesses. We're trying to make it better. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, do you know? I think it was a great thing that we passed the abatement. Unfortunately, we haven't been able to utilize it. I think we need to step it up. We need to step into states that have income tax, we don't have income tax. That's a great way to attract companies to come to our community, come to our county. If you have your employees in New York State, and they're paying high income tax, in New York State income tax, you're paying federal income tax. When you move your company, you offer your employees to come down to Florida, one, our cost of living is lower, and two, you're not gonna be paying income tax. You can attract these businesses really by, you know, sending out emails to companies. There's companies moving to Washington State because they're offering incentives there also, with no income tax, lower taxes for their corporations. We need to, we have our things in place, we need to start attracting the businesses we want. We have an airport area out there, we can attract aviation companies, we can attract other businesses to go out there, so it doesn't impact our community by having a larger business, maybe fifty to a hundred employees. Obviously, you don't want to put a company on US One that employs five hundred people, and at five o'clock and eight o'clock in the morning, you're gonna have five hundred people coming in and out of US One. The MPO board would go crazy because the traffic flow alone on US One would just be astronomical. I mean, it's bad enough when the snowbirds come down, we know how terrible US One can get. So I think we have our economic plan in place, we have a nice tax abatement, we just need to find companies that are willing to suit our needs and attract them to our city. And like I said earlier, I think if we can streamline our work management department to actually attract businesses and not make it very difficult to come in here, then I think we have a good start for economic planning. Mr. Gillings?
Thank you, Wesley. You know, I've been to the economic development meetings when they put their tax abatement program together. And they went such a hurry to get it done so that they can get to the finish line first, before the council. But in reality, it was designed incorrectly. They were looking to attract big corporations. And if you look at their record, just look at their performance, how many jobs have they created under their policies? That's right, nothing. Just to check the records. Now, if they would've just taken their time, went real slow, looked and figured out what's going to work in Sebastian, it's small moms and pops. Something very simple. First you concentrate on keeping what's here. They're running everybody out of town with their coenforcement, with their sign witnesses. It's easy, and when you have a company that's here already, they can go ahead and hire it. And that's, they can rent a house or buy a house, and all that needs to continue to go up. But they're looking at the big picture, that's number one. Number two, when you set something, a project that size, you monitor it. You have quarterly meetings, you have your executives come in and say, okay, what have we done? What have we accomplished? Where are we going? What do we have to change to make it better? They didn't do that. As a matter of fact, I did the budget. I went and met with the director, Joe Griffin, I said, how much is in your budget? Zero. He can't even send out a postcard. So they didn't put anything in the budget. This is the kind of leadership that you've been having for two years. Listen, I'm not asking for change, I just want to make a difference. I want to bring fresh ideas, new ideas, I want to think outside the box. I don't want to focus on what mom and pops out of here, keep the jobs out of here, give them incentive to hire. And then, once we get the proper utilities in here, you can bring companies in, gas lines. They're not coming without roads, utilities, they're just not gonna come. It's pie in the sky. So you gotta measure your performance on everything that you do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gillings. Mr. Parkland?
Yes, thank you. You see, I don't agree with Andrew, you know, you follow Don, Don's like the cerebral one of the council. Very brilliant, I like him. And I think there's a lot of bright and talented people in the city of Sebastian. And I think the council has been very fortunate with some of the people who have served on there. And they had the foresight to implement an economic development committee several years ago with the local business people that were involved. And they came up with suggestions and brought it back to the council, who voted on, you know, implementing the economic development plan. And one of the first ones was the tax abatement issue, which was put out two years ago. And it voted with, I believe, almost a seventy percent approval rating. Another thing that they did is that they put the economic development plan in the land development code, which basically is like the bible for the city. Another thing they did is that they implemented, or they, you know, sired Mr. Joe Griffin to be the economic development coordinator. He's, I think, a brilliant man. Now what the council needs to do is they need to define his role and his responsibilities as to what he can and cannot do as the economic development coordinator, and let him get to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, Ms. Miller, since you answered this first, we're gonna start, you can answer this one last, congratulations. Okay, Councilman Wright? Over the last few years, city council has worked to reduce expenses. How would you evaluate their efforts, and what would you do differently?
I've spent a lot of time at budget meetings in addition to reviewing the Bible of City Council. There's not a lot that I would have done differently. I'm very pleased with the work, we have a volunteer budget committee that is thorough. They look at every aspect of the budget, and the reason I like to go to those meetings is to monitor what is going on. I think if you look at the end result, sometimes you get the picture of what is really happening. We have not had a mileage rate increase in Sebastian. I think that that's exceptional. I mean, other communities around us are increasing mileage, increasing taxes. They're buried in debt. We're not there. I just saw, yesterday, that I saw in Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, which is the capital of Pennsylvania, declare bankruptcy. They could not pay back all the interest on all the money that they had borrowed. We have not done that. We have made conscious decisions not to take CRA money and borrow millions of dollars for projects that we might not be able to afford. We haven't borrowed tons of money, put the city in debt. We have an exceptional situation with a reserve fund that exceeds the minimum standard established for a city. That's there, that we could have emergencies down the road if the state doesn't provide us with adequate funding in the future. So the city's credit rating and bond rating were improved this year. And it's hard for me to look at anything that we've done and say, you know, you could always probably find something to criticize, but I think it's done an exceptional job, and I'd give the credit to the city manager, the staff, and the budget committee, and the council.
Thank you. Ms. Corrigan?
Could you repeat the question?
Absolutely. Over the last few years, city council has worked to reduce expenses. How would you evaluate their efforts, and what would you do differently?
I give the city an A+, an A++. Everything that Don said is true. Our reserve exceeds our minimum. But that's given us the opportunity to improve our credit rating, which is a good thing. We don't want to be the Harrisburg of next. The streamlining of growth management was mentioned earlier by somebody. Folks, we can't streamline that office much more. We just lost two people, we streamlined it this past year. We lost the director, we lost the environmental specialist, we're down to two votes. And we're combining departments, so that's A+. You can't go down to zero. So we've done a great job. The budget committee is truly, every year has been an asset to us. Again, we just don't get enough public input so that we can make, help make the decisions. Other than that, oh, taxes is a reflection of our budgeting. Folks, our revenue from property taxes has not been this low because our houses have all gone down. The revenue we receive from the city of Sebastian and property taxes has not been this low since 2003 or '04, right, somewhere around that. Our spending has gone way down. We have not been this low in years. We have reduced your mileage rate or held it the same for five out of the past six years. The one year we gave it a bump up, we were still growing, growing, growing after the hurricanes. So Sebastian's done an A+ job, and I want to continue to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Corrigan. Mr. Decker, do you know? I think Mr. Minner's been doing an outstanding job. He's cut a few people in different departments that seem to be unnecessary because our departments are still running poorly. Yes, growth management is down to two people. When I said streamline, I didn't say slim down. I said streamline meaning make it process faster and easier for businesses to come in. I don't mean keep cutting personnel. Our building department is self-sustained, that does not count for the budget. They actually pay for their space in the city hall. They pay for their automobiles, they pay for their gas, they're self-sustained, they pay for their employees. So that department is staying full by itself, we do not get into there. You know, our police department is doing an outstanding job keeping our services up. So I think as far as money goes right now, I think the budgeting's had a good job overseeing the city as far as the public's concerned. But I think Mr. Minner's doing an outstanding job keeping the spending under control so it doesn't raise our mileage rate or raise our taxes. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Gillings?
You know, a good place to start is with the city manager. Cut his discretionary spending, it used to be five thousand, they pushed it up to fifteen. Put it back to five during the hot economic times. And especially, you know, you have two councilmen who are up here. And we tried, I brought it to their attention, let's get the checkbook on the internet so everybody can see what's going on. Total transparency for the community. You don't have to go dodging and looking for discretionary spending. Just having twenty thousand people being able to look at it will force them to be very fickle. But they don't want to do that, why, I don't know. They do it in Palm Bay, it's easy, the technology's there. You know, Felsmere, they outsource their growth management department. There's just no growth going on. Why do we even have two people, you know, we talked about merging, the council talked about merging, building department, growth management, they still haven't done any of that. If you get a cycling that comes in, you have to get past, we have an outside engineering firm review it, which is what we've been doing. That's one way to cut money, expenses right there. So there are ways to cut expenses. You know, if you let the community get involved. You know, by getting the Citizens Academy in here, the police department saves a quarter million dollars with twenty-nine, thirty volunteers. If we can bring the citizens in here and give them benefits for coming in, and teach them about finance, teach them about growth management, teach them about the building department, you can save money that way because they can do minuscule things that'll save the taxpayers money. But they're reluctant to bring anybody in, it's like, they don't, this is the city hall that belongs to the people, and I'm trying to, you know, they're doing it all over the country, it's a big thing now, Citizens Academy. Do you think they will invite the Vol County down here and do a presentation and let us know how the Vol County Citizens Academy's going? No. So there's ways to cut, you gotta have total transparency, it's your money. Let's get the checkbook on the internet so everybody can see. Minner just gave out money from Hurricane Harbor, the working waterfront, nobody knows about it. Do a check, fifteen thousand here for lift stations that are not supposed to be done, AC units that shouldn't went through a quarter million dollar fund.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Parkland? Could you repeat the question?
Absolutely. Over the last few years, city council has worked hard to reduce spending. How would you evaluate their efforts, and what would you do differently?
I think the city has done a great job at bringing in expenses. I mean, they got a lot less revenue. I think enough can't be said for Mr. Minner about how he has worked the budget for everything. I mean, and again, as Don had mentioned, and Andrew echoed as well, you know, our reserve fund exceeds the minimum. You know, save it for a rainy day, hopefully that rainy day will never come. And the city's bond rating as a result has been increased, while many other cities throughout the state and throughout the countries have decreased. Even the federal government's bond rating has gone down, while ours was raised. I mean, the city and staff and the employees here, I mean, they've been working on furloughs the last couple of years. And I'm not fully in favor of furloughs because the thing is, you ask somebody to take two days off, then it's very easy to say, why not make it four days off? And that is basically, that's a cut in pay for the employees, but they have taken that. We haven't seen, I mean, the services in Sebastian have maintained the same even though the expenses have been drawn down. I mean, one example that I can think of is my son plays baseball over there on Market Street. And Sebastian, the Little League, only charges twenty-five dollars for any kid to play baseball. A lot of kids coming from single homes. You go down to Bureau Beach, it costs you a hundred dollars to play. You go to Fort St. Lucie, it costs you a hundred and fifty dollars to play in their Little League. So through the city, about keeping expenses down and maintaining some of the quality of life there, they have helped families. A lot of times, they just may not be seen to other people. I mean, just like any family, when they have, you know, they lose some income, they have five percent less to do. Government, you know, they need to do more with less, they need to tighten up a little bit, and the same with the city. I think they've done a great job of bringing in expenses, and enough can't be said for Al Manner and the staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to get it one more time.
Absolutely.
Just want to make sure I answered it right.
Sure. Over the last few years, city council has worked to reduce expenses. How would you evaluate their efforts, and what would you do differently?
First off, evaluating their efforts. Efforts have been great. In 2009, general fund spending, our expenditures were just over twelve million, and compared to 2012, it was only nine point nine million. I mean, that's, you know, over the course of a few years, that's quite a few million dollars, you know. And what would I do differently? Right now, nothing.
All right.
One second.
This will start on this.
This will start on this one. Ms. Coy, you get to go first on the question after being first on.
I'm sorry, wait, sorry, then I can answer.
And this is the last question that I have in front of me this evening, and we'll give you the opportunity to answer this one. And it's, this is, here it goes. Is cost-cutting measures taken by the city could have long-term negative effects? What measures would you take to turn this around?
Repeat that one more time.
Cost-cutting measures taken by the city could have long-term negative effects. What measures would you take to turn this around?
Okay, that question is not real specific, so there's a lot of interpretation in there. And I'm gonna take it as cost-cutting being levels of service being cut, police departments being cut. And I think we addressed a little bit of that. We are at the rock bottom of cut, cut, cut. Again, we have to decide, is level of service critical or is maybe a bump in the military critical? For the police department, there's no question in my mind. Do we ask, as Donna McCarlin just said, do we ask for more furlough days? You can't keep asking people to do more with less. We have, over and over and over, our union negotiations, we've just successfully completed our Police Pedestrian Association and the PEA, which is the Public Employees Association, contracts. They were, it was a blessing to work with them, and they have agreed to be very minimal in their spending. So, what do we do to turn it around? Volunteers and citizen academy? Folks, would you want Sal Niglia working in your budget department, keeping the books? I don't know. I don't know his checkbook balancing skills are that great. You can only have volunteers. It's how I love you dearly, and please don't take this badly.
There goes my candidacy for next year.
Yeah, there you go. We have volunteers here in city hall, just for the record. There's only so many places you can put a volunteer. Sometimes when you have people who want to be helpful, it takes more effort to supervise the help than it does to do it yourself. We have maxed that out, so that's not gonna be a solution. So, I'll stop. And Donna? I wish I had followed you on this one.
We're doing that right now. We're furloughing our city employees. We're talking about adding a pavilion. We're talking about the beautification of 512. Where is the extra hours gonna come to maintain these projects? We keep spending money on projects that aren't very necessary, you know? We found money, the grant money, whatever, to put a pavilion up, and then it was quick. Where are we gonna put it? Where are we gonna put it? If we don't need it, then don't put it up. Somebody's gonna have to maintain these services, and we don't have the city employees to continue to keep maintaining those services. The more stuff we do in the city, the more taxed our services become because of our city workers are at their rear bones. We can't mow any more lawns, our city workers. We don't, we can't, we've already privatized out mowing the empty lot right of ways. How many more things can we ask our city employees to continue to do on furlough days on lack of, they haven't gotten pay increases in three years. Yeah, they signed their contracts. They're probably happy to keep having a job, but it's not fair to them. I mean, if we were in the same boat and never getting pay raises, we'd be one unhappy country, I'll tell you that. Because bread keeps going up, milk keeps going up, gas obviously keeps going up. You can't keep your level of service up if you keep adding things to the city. You know, we maintain our swales, we mow these, you know? You're in Florida, grass grows, things grow. You gotta keep maintaining those properties and projects. So, I think we gotta curtail, one, or really look into the future projects we're going to do in the city and what impact it has on the city down the road. You know, everything we do, the dog park, great idea. We also have to maintain the dog park. You know, everything we do has a consequence that people only look at the initial cost of. It's always a constant cost to the city, whatever we do to the city. So, we really have to curb our future projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gilliam.
I mean, I have a question.
Absolutely. Cost-cutting measures taken by the city have, could have long-term negative effects. What measures would you take to turn this around?
It goes back to the old revenue question, okay? It's gotta go into their budget, gotta set goals. I would start with, you got 67 counties in the state of Florida. Once you get the citizens academy up and running, you get eight, 10, 20, 30 volunteers. Say, look, start with the counties, then work your way through the cities, and look at their budgets and figure out a way where they're bringing revenue in that's not affecting the taxpayers. It's a no-brainer. We don't need to reinvent the wheel. There are other sources out there. That's what I, that's what I did as homework before, you know, I come to a budget meeting. I knew that we need more revenue. So, you know, if you're talking about cutting services, you gotta find more revenue without increasing the military. And it's simple. You know, see, Andrea mentions union negotiations successful. Morale is at a long, all-time low. They haven't had a request of women increase in years. They're taking furloughs. Maybe if we give our salaries up until those furloughs are gone, they'll get a little more motivated and get creative and thinking outside the box. There's no motivation here. They're not setting standards, performance, dates, and rechecking them to say, okay, we looked at 67 counties. Well, great, we got 51 states. Where do you want to start? At the whole country. And by the way, with them in America, we're gonna, where the countries are successful. And let's see what they're doing for taxes and how they're not taxing their people. You just gotta put your foot forward, get motivated, have an organization that's motivated and directed. But, you know, your staff, they're beat to death because you keep putting up these big projects in 512, and you gotta maintain it. But you don't want to pay them any more money, but you're gonna give them more work. But they have an echelon. They all got $10,000 raises. Nobody knows about them, you know? But, and the reason why is because they're taking on more work, the administrators. It's not fair. We got to think outside the box. You need an entrepreneur. You need business people up here, as well as senior citizens and young people. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carter.
Yes, could you repeat the question?
Absolutely. Question number six. Cost-cutting measures taken by the city could have long-term negative effects. What measures would you take to turn this around?
Of course, any kind of cost-cutting measures ultimately can have negative effects. It all boils down to, I think, you gotta measure the wants versus the needs. It's like you have a car. You say you gotta change your oil every 35 miles. I usually try and go 10,000 because I think I can squeeze it out. But if you try and go 20,000 or 30,000 miles without changing your oil, then your blow motor, can you afford a new motor? No, you can't. So, anytime with the spending, you're deciding, you gotta weigh the wants versus the needs. Can you afford to do it and maintain it? And then you have to look at, can you afford not to do it? Because not only will you be maintaining it later on down the road, you may be replacing the whole project. It's like you get a little leak in your roof. I mean, that's the only examples I can give you. You get a little leak in the roof, you let it keep going. Next thing you know, you gotta replace the whole roof. So, it's just constantly reassessing the wants versus the needs and always looking to maintain the quality of life in Sebastian. Because if you allow that to go down, then property values will continue to drop, and that's no good for anybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Ms. Miller.
Absolutely. Cost-cutting measures taken by the city could have long-term negative effects. What measures would you take to turn this around?
Just like anything, it could happen, it may happen, it might not happen. But I think, first and foremost, you have to learn to live within your means. And I think sometimes with cost cuts, that's what we learn to do. You know, we learn to live as a family, you know, on a tighter budget. We grow vegetables instead of buying so much or whatever. You know, we're learning how to live with less, and it's, again, you know, wants versus needs. I think in order to turn that around, you've got to encourage businesses to stay here. The more businesses that stay here and thrive, the more revenue that's gonna come in from taxes and, you know, more people that are gonna wanna come and stay in Sebastian. Encouraging citizen involvement, whether it be a citizens academy or volunteering just in city hall, something, get on a committee just so that you can get a wider range of viewpoints. It's gonna take not just the council deciding what to do, but it's gonna take all the citizens deciding what to do because it's their town ultimately, and we're just gonna help and guide it along. So, I think that in order, just to kinda summarize, to turn it around, you would have to, you know, encourage businesses and citizens to be involved.
Councilman Wright.
You know, the cost-cutting measures realistically impact us negatively. Let's talk about some of the areas that realistically this could be a problem. You know, we have reduced staff in the police department. We did just complete a PEA contract. I think that we have a great and dedicated police department. I hope their morale is good. We just completed a contract with Public Employees Union at city hall. We have a very dedicated, hard-working staff. You know, and it's funny, I talk to some of the people, and they like their furlough day. They don't like to get their money back, but they enjoy having that extra day off once a month. But the issues that I'm concerned about are what you would call deferred maintenance and deferred projects that can have a long-term impact on us. We were fortunate to get some stimulus money to be able to redo Barstree. So, deferring roadwork. What would happen with that in terms of deleterious effect on the city is at some point, we may have to pay catch-up. And if everything can hold together long enough for the property values to come up and the economy to improve, when we have to pay catch-up, hopefully, the money will be there to pay for it. So, these are the things that concern me the most. We are taking care of our stormwater problem. That is continuing on an ongoing basis, and we don't have, we have some street flooding. We don't have anybody who has water in their houses and with some unbelievable rains. So, I think we're doing a lot in maintaining the city, but the deferred maintenance areas are what I'm afraid down the road could be a problem, and hopefully, we'll get a turnaround before that happens.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. I believe that gives everybody the opportunity to answer at least one question first. Fair and fair, these are the questions that were handed, and certainly appreciate you being straightforward in answering them this evening, especially of course, it's a large crowd turning out here tonight. I'd love to give each of them a round of applause. Thank you very much. Now, we're gonna have a two-minute closing, and I will adhere to the two-minute on the closing remarks, probably more stringent than I have on most of the questions, just to kinda keep things in line. So, at this time, Ms. Coy, you asked your question first the last time, so we're gonna start with Mr. Deverio. And for your two-minute closing, Ms. Coy, you will go last with your closing, so that's okay, just as you requested in the beginning. Not by doing it on my own, this is how it worked out to rotate everything.
It's been an interesting little debate. Some people haven't answered any questions. Some people have answered questions very intelligently. It's funny how the biggest project in the city was not brought up, the working waterfront. I went to the working waterfront today. Some of the issues last night's meeting with the working waterfront were that we weren't in compliance with the grant. Mr. Minner said today he was supposed to have a meeting and start them to comply with the working waterfront grant. If we don't comply, the city would have to pay the grant back. The council voted to comply with the state grant. I went down there today. They have 20 barstools still at the bar. They're supposed to have eight to 10. They're doing full counter service at all tables in the working waterfront. It's not supposed to be like that. It's supposed to be a little crummy shack, if I recall people on the council saying that. There is nothing down there that doesn't say that that's a restaurant. That's my first issue. You really need to address that. The council may mention addressing it, but somebody needs to step up. Nobody's been overseeing the spending down there. Nobody from the city. We let the nonprofit run the money, oversee their own project, and that's what we got today, where everything's in non-compliance. That's the problem with the city, and I don't wanna have to pay back the $2 million, $3 million grant that we already got. Number two, we talk about our stormwater doing great, we're doing great with our stormwater in the city. We pay for that in our taxes. There's a separate assessment of $43 per household that pays separately for our water. It's not like we're finding that money in our budget. That's there. So, in closing, I think if you're gonna vote for me, you're voting for an independent vote, you're not voting for a block vote up here. So, vote Damien Gilian. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gilliam.
Thank you, Wesley. That was pretty good, David. Yeah, you know, it's funny they didn't bring up the working waterfront because that's the child we wanted to know about. But, and I can understand it's Spoh, Rupen, we know the connections, but it's a bulldog. It's a mess. It's something to be disgraced about because when you really look at the details of that deal, and I wrote a letter together a year ago, a letter to the editor, it was bad back then. I'm sure everybody, they need it to death, so I don't wanna continue on down that path, but it's not over yet, and that's a disgrace. It really is to this community. And our council people were going down while the whole thing was going on, and until the state caught them, that's when they all started saying, whoa, we gotta do something. But I'm glad you brought that up there because I can remember that. There's a few other things, you know, the crematory, dead center of Sebastian, the middle of a residential area. Guy, there almost burned down the ducts cloth. It was a special-use permit, and they rewarded him, gave him twice the size. We annexed Shady West Mobile Home Park, senior citizens, for money because we want the commercial property. Now, those people have five years to pack up and move, and they thought they were gonna be there forever. After the county already told them that. This, these are the kind of decisions that our council people have been giving our people in this community. Listen, I hate to hear that word change, but we need something different. We need to start fresh. David, you were right. I'm an independent vote. I'm not a block vote, okay? So, when you come in front of David Gilliam, if I get a seat up here, you'll be treated fairly. You'll be treated, whatever laws are on the books, those are the laws you'll be treated by. There'll be no PAC money to my campaign. The other candidates, Mrs. Coy, Donna, take the PAC money. As a matter of fact, I'd like to donate my salary again back to the community to get the citizens academy started until we can get the furloughs corrected and get the, of course, the livings taken care of. I want to put my money where my mouth is, okay?
Thank you, David.
Vote Damien, love Sebastian.
My father.
Thank you. Once again, thank you, Wesley, for coordinating the event. Thank you, Spoh, for having me here. Now, all I can say is, I just wanna take an active role in the direction for this city. I'm led by my faith, my family, and my commitment to service. I always look out for the little guy. I'm from New York. I'm probably only Yankee fan, not Yankee fan. I'm a meth fan, proud of it. I always look out for the little guy. The interest to the city of Sebastian is what I hold to my heart. Anything that comes before the council, like anybody on the council, I'm only one person. I will go with my heart for the best interest of the city of Sebastian. And I can guarantee you that there will be no one more prepared than I am. I'm not as cerebral as Mr. Wright. My homework will be done. Everything will be better. My experience with the Department of Children and Families, I come up with solutions to very complex problems on a daily basis, and I work well with others, and I can work with any kind of people. I don't look to work with, I don't want people surrounded by me who think all the same as I do because the best possible product you can get is when you have differing ideas, whether some of them may be agitated, you know, some people can say instigators, but you need an instigator to keep the paint from drying up in the can. So, you do have to stir. So, all opinions are, you know, valid, and what you'll get on the city here is I will do the best I can for the citizens of Sebastian. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Ms. Miller.
I'm sure a lot of you have seen my signs around town, and there's three words on the signs. It says leadership, integrity, and family, and those are kind of my mantra, my motto. I hope to be a good leader. I hope to lead with integrity, and I hope to bring Sebastian together as a family, not just, you know, our individual little nuclear families. I'm not a politician in it for what I can get out of the council seat, but rather, I would like to prove myself as a servant, seeing how I can serve the citizens of Sebastian. And there's not much more I can say than that. Something new, it's, you know, a new perspective, fresh voice, and remember, it's time for Miller in office.
Thank you. Mr. Wright.
You know, it's, it's amazing when I hear some of the comments up here. We have a terrific city and I'm very proud of everybody in this room to be proud and pleased of what Sebastian is, what it is going to be, where we are today in all, in almost every area that I can think of. You know, if we stumble on a project, we fix it. We've got pretty good feedback today that, you know, the solutions that are proposed to bring the waterfront back into compliance with the plan are accepted by the head of the fishermen's groups that we can move forward over the next couple of weeks and get all of that taken care of. Doesn't necessarily it's gonna be totally easy. But look at any government project, most of them fail. Now, look at Archie Smith Fish House, which the county had been responsible for. It's boarded up and fenced and nothing is happening there. So, I would like you to give the council some credit for moving to have an active working waterfront. It was set up to benefit our working commercial fishermen. That was our goal and that's being accomplished. We have a few bumps in the road that we have to take care of and they're being handled. This city has a great future and we, as council, are trying to move forward to make Sebastian a better place, some place that's recognizable and not just a place that people drive through between Bureau Beach and Miller. And this is part of the reason that we're doing some of the projects. Identify by getting 512 to be nice, work on US-1, improve the city, and when the economy rebounds, we're all in debt. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Ms. Coy.
And last but not least, I'm not going to waste my two minutes of time answering any allegations that might have been thrown my way. Don covered the working waterfront. I will let you know that September 1st, I was one of the first ones running to council, running to Mr. Minner, going, something's not right here. And I intend to follow through with that. I'm very concerned it has potential, potential. I'm not giving up. We're not throwing the money away, we're not gonna give the money back. But I don't wanna waste any more time, just know, I am watching and I'm on it. I'm dot com this year. Andrea Coy, dot com. Go there, just take a peek. I've never been at dot com, I'm trying. One thing I didn't mention in the introduction, just in case, no one opened the newspaper this morning, but woo-hoo, Press Journal endorsed Don Wright, Don McPartland, and Andrea Coy. So, thank you, Press Journal. I appreciate that. Yes, I might be receiving some PAC money and by gosh and golly, when everyone look out the window, is it snowing out? Did hell freeze over? The Realtors Association's endorsed me this year. That shows you how I've grown. Six years ago, I understand why no, they wouldn't want me. I was the, Spoh embraced me back then. We were small, we fought and fought. It took a long time for me to gain appreciation, to gain appreciation for them and for them to gain appreciation for me. It's a two-way street. Oh, my word. I only have a minute. On Tuesday, November 8th, you're gonna be asked to vote for three city council members. We're experiencing an economic hurricane right now. It's not the time to vote for empty promises and hot air. You need someone with experience and leadership you can trust. Voting. Thank you very much.
That was very difficult. But ladies and gentlemen, first of all, Bruce and Dean, thank you very much for your efforts and coordination. The majority of your city council members are sitting before you today. Each, each one of you has pretty much said that if you have any questions that you really would like to ask or some follow-ups on anything they had to say, they'd be very accommodating and answer those as best they possibly can. I'd like to say that my admiration and respect goes to each and every one of you and for not just you, but your families, for you getting involved in this, but A, for your families allowing you to get involved with it. I think politics is truly harder on a family than it is on the hand of the individual. And I appreciate each and every one of your time. Look forward to working with you and whichever one of you may need to become mayor, vice mayor, I'm looking forward to that. And so, with that being said, we'll go ahead and wrap this up. And again, thank you for helping me maintain simple discourse, discussion, conversation. I couldn't have done it without your help and thank you very much.
Thank you, all candidates. Thank you, Wesley Davis. Thank you to all the citizens. And remember, election day is November 8th. And also, if you can, drop by City Hall and pick up a copy of Detroiters because these are gonna be the referendums that we have to vote on. Thank you all and to all a good night.